Welcome to the March 2 meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. Vice Mayor Madeline Scales Harris has our prayer and our pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. May we bow our heads? Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, you are awesome. We just come to you just to say thank you. And Lord, I just cannot thank you enough for everything you've done for me. Lord, anyone that's never seen a miracle, just look at me, Lord, and things you've done in my life. You brought me from a mighty long wait, Lord, and I just thank you for that. We thank you for the blessings that you've bestowed on us, seen and unseen. Lord, we cannot thank you enough. We thank you for the people who risked their lives to keep us safe, the firefighters, the police officers, the medical people. Lord, we thank you. We just cannot thank you enough, Lord. We add special blessings on the homeless, the senior citizens, our veterans. Lord, you're just awesome. And Lord, we thank you for this great city that we live in. When we look around things that are happening, we can say, "Thank you, Lord. We live in a great city." Yes, we have our problems, Lord, but it's still a great city to live in and raise our children. And Lord, as we prepare to handle the business of the city, we ask that you move in the midst of us and that we do it fairly and in harmony in things that would be pleasing in your sight. This is my prayer, Lord, that I ask in your darling son's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one ceremonial item tonight, and this month is General Aviation Month. And so Chad Gurkey, our manager of our airport, is here. Chad, how's your staff?
Doing well, thank you, sir.
Good. The city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee has had a significant interest in the continued vitality of general aviation, aircraft manufacturing, aviation educational institutions, aviation organizations, and community airports. And whereas general aviation and the Murfreesboro Municipal Airport have an immense economic impact on the city of Murfreesboro, and whereas the city of Murfreesboro and Middle Tennessee State University's Aerospace Department have a long history of partnership and support for the education and training of the young men and women who bravely serve in our military or work in the aviation industry, both in the United States and around the world. Whereas Tennessee boasts a robust network of public, commercial, and general aviation airports serving more than 12,000 pilots and 4,000 general aviation aircraft, and whereas the nation's aviation infrastructure represents a vitally important public benefit, general aviation supports Tennessee's economy. It also improves overall quality of life by supporting emergency medical and healthcare services, law enforcement, firefighting, and disaster relief, and by also transporting business travelers to their destinations quickly and safely. Now therefore, I Shay McFarlane, Mayor of the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim March 1st through the 31st, 2017, to be General Aviation Month and encourage all citizens to join in this recognition. Chad?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much. Thanks.
Thanks for your clapping. Good for you, Mayor. And there's, as we talk about General Aviation Month, there's a lot of exciting things that are happening out at the, out at the airports. I know the city council is going to be discussing that in the next upcoming months when we talk about our budget, but lots of cool stuff that's happening out there. All right. You have the consent agenda in front of you.
There's no questions or comments, I move for approval as presented.
Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarlane.
Aye. You have the minutes of a lot of meetings in front of you. January 26th, February 2nd, February 2nd, the special meeting, February 2nd, the regular meeting, February 9th, the special meeting, February 9th, the regular meeting, February 16th, the special meeting, on the comp plan, February 16th, the regular meeting, and February 23rd, and these are all 2017 meetings. Any additions or deletions to the minutes?
So moved.
Second. Motion is second, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarlane.
Aye. I'm moving the second readings and consider for passage on second and final reading, ordinance 16OZ41, to amend conditions applicable to an area in the planned residential development, PRD District, Purling Brook, PRD, located on Asbury Lane.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarlane.
Aye. We'll conduct a public hearing and consider a certificate of compliance for Arda Man Kumar Patel at Greenland, or Greenland Liquor and Beer, 1415 Greenland Drive. Ms. Wright?
Mayor, this application is in order. It is an application for a new location. That is why it requires a public hearing, and then after that public hearing, you would consider a certificate of compliance for this individual. In case you were curious, we have four locations available. If this one is approved, that will make it three after this one.
All right, we're going to conduct a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll consider for passage a certificate of compliance for Arda Man Kumar Patel at Greenland Liquor and Beer, 1415 Greenland Drive.
Move for approval.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarlane.
Aye. We'll consider for renewal our certificate of compliance for Timothy Miles and Brandy Miles at Chill and Wine, Chill Wine and Spirits at 2445 Memorial Boulevard, Suite D.
Mayor, this application is strictly a renewal for an existing location. They are trying to meet the, to your requirement by the state to have their license renewed, and it is in order.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarlane.
Aye. Pursuant to Resolution 17RPH01 adopted by the city council on January 12, 2017, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately .47 acres along Savannah Ridge and Hyannis Drive from General Office OG District to single-family residential 10 RS10 District. Marwan Alkahyemi, applicant 2016-458, notice that said public hearing was published in the February 13, 2017 issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Green.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Our first public hearing coming from the Planning Commission this evening is for you to consider an application for rezoning for property that's located on the corner of Savannah Ridge and Hyannis Drive. You can see the property identified in blue on the map before you. This property is currently zoned OG, and that's General District, General Office District. And in 2014, the Planning Commission reviewed and approved a site plan for the development of a small office on this lot. The owner has decided not to move forward with the development of the small office and instead is requesting that you consider a rezone of this property from OG, or General Office District, to RS10, Single Family Residential District. This property is located directly adjacent to single-family residences on the eastern and southern side. On the eastern side, you can see it's RS12, and on the south, it's RS10, or RS8. So their request is to ask for RS10 lots, which is, of course, the average between the RS12 and eight sizes. The properties that are across Hyannis Drive, or the property across Hyannis Drive is zoned PCD, and that's actually the location of the Camino Real Restaurant, and into the south is a larger shopping center. The applicants have submitted some preliminary drawings to show two lots on this property under the RS10 zone. They, of course, would have to meet our minimum standards. If they could not meet the minimum standards, then they would only be allowed to do one lot. There's no proposal to include these two lots within the Savannah Ridge Homeowners Association. The Planning Commission did consider this item and hold a public hearing on January 4th, after which it's making a recommendation to you that you do rezone the property from OG to RS10, and that recommendation is unanimous. The owner is here this evening. If you have any questions from him regarding the zoning change, and of course, I'd be glad to answer any before or after the public hearing.
Any questions for Ms. Green? Thank you, Ms. Green. Okay, we're going to need to conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning this .47 acres, but before we do, I didn't give our public hearing rules before we start, but if you're coming to the podium, if you'll please state your name and your address. If you're representing a group, you'll get five minutes. If not, if you're representing individually, it's three minutes. If you'll keep all your questions and comments to the city council, at the end of the public hearing, we'll do our best to get all of those questions answered. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll consider for passage on first reading ordinance 17OZ01 to rezone an area along Savannah Ridge and Hyannis Drive to single-family residential 10 RS10 District. So moved.
Second.
Mr. Shacklet, Mr. Wade. Ms. Wright, please call.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarlane.
Aye. Pursuant to Resolution 17RPH02 adopted by the city council on January 12, 2017, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider adoption of a plan of services for and annexation of approximately .7 acres on East Overall Creek Road right-of-way, which had been proposed to be annexed to the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee. City of Murfreesboro Engineering Department is the applicant, 2016-521. Notice that said public hearing was published in the February 13, 2017 issue of a local newspaper. Ms. Green.
Thank you, sir. This next public hearing is for you to consider the adoption of a plan of services and the annexation petition for a portion of right-of-way only of East Overall Creek Road, and you can see the right-of-way is identified in the orange color on the map before you. The yellow color is existing city limits. The white is the unincorporated area, so that's Rutherford County, and the orange is what's being proposed to be annexed. This property is adjacent to properties owned by Mr. David Alcorn, which the city council considered for annexation last year in 2006. At the time that it came before you, we mentioned that we'd be coming back to you to include this additional East Overall Creek Road right-of-way as an area to be annexed, because after the annexation, Mr. Alcorn submitted a development plan to us which showed large lots, large single-family residential lots being developed on the property. Some of these lots would have access to East Overall Creek Road, and because of that, it staffs belief that this right-of-way should be in the city limits so that we can require some improvements to the right-of-way. It's, East Overall Creek Road is quite substandard, both in size and in the way it's constructed, and so these lots will be, Mr. Alcorn will be required to dedicate right-of-way and build the road to city standards with a proper turnaround at the end of the road. We've included a plan of services for this property. Due to the nature of the property being right-of-way, many services that the city would provide aren't necessary, such as solid waste for this property, but we are concerned about the delivery of services or medical responders, so we will require the, this property or this right-of-way to be redesigned so that our vehicles can easily maneuver the property. You should conduct a public hearing, after which you'll consider two separate resolutions. One will be on the adoption of the plan of services, and the second will be on the annexation. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. The Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing January 4th of this year, and their recommendation to you is that you do annex this right-of-way. Of course, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Green? All right, seeing none, we'll need to conduct a public hearing on the plan of services for an annexation of approximately .7 acres of East Overall Creek Road right-of-way. City of Murfreesboro Engineering Department, applicant 2016-521. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this annexation and plan of services, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll consider for adoption Resolution 17RPS02 to adopt a plan of services for approximately .7 acres of East Overall Creek Road right-of-way. City of Murfreesboro Engineering Department applicant.
Ms. Green. When they bring this road up to city standard, does that mean that on the city side of the road that will have sidewalks and street lighting?
On the city side of the road, there will be streetlights. I'm looking at Mr. Sam Huddleston to see about sidewalks.
This will be the same as short road last time.
So you anticipate no sidewalk on this portion, because the rest of the East Overall Creek Road wouldn't have sidewalks? But the road that is within the subdivision that connects to it will all have curbs, gutters, sidewalks on both sides of the street?
Will these be front yards that the property developer is developing? I mean, is there a reason why we wouldn't require sidewalks? I mean, I'm just looking at it from a pedestrian-friendly standpoint of trying to get to the main road. It looks to me like if, if this is going to be their front yard and they wanted connectivity to the, does the front of the property?
Evening, Mayor McFarlane members of the city council. Sam Huddleston with the Engineering Department. Mr. Smotherman, the stretch of roadway we're looking at is, as we discussed last night, is existing two-lane county ditch section. Actually, this one's barely a full lane at its current width. There is no sidewalk network on East Overall Creek or Old Salem at this point, so sidewalks here would only cover about five lots of this street, and it would have no network to tie to. If you see East Overall Creek, the portion that we're proposing to annex, shown in orange, but East Overall Creek actually makes a turn at the intersection with Constantine, and the street name remains the same even though it looks like it's a continuation of Constantine. And then Old Salem, of course, is a, is a two-lane ditch section roadway, so we don't have a sidewalk network on any of the streets at that, in this neighborhood at this time.
I guess, I'm just wondering why we would treat it any differently than any other development. I'm almost thinking that now we almost always request that there be sidewalks when we develop anything within city limits as a...
For new, for new roadway construction, that's certainly true. For development along existing roadways, there's an evaluation at the time based on the ability to construct those improvements as part of an, of an overall street network.
Yeah. I just, you know, I, I live in the Mitchell Nelson neighborhood. There never were sidewalks built. There never will be sidewalks built, basically, because they weren't built at the time of the road construction, and they weren't paid for by the developer. If you don't do it now, it's probably never going to get done, even though it's just one segment. It kind of justifies the, is that Constantine that runs over to Old Salem?
Actually, it's, at, East Overall Creek Road continues to the right in our diagram.
So, so the rest of East Overall Creek that comes into the city limits does not have sidewalks either?
That's correct. And, and Old Salem does not have sidewalks. I certainly understand your, your emphasis on sidewalks. The other thing that's absent from that is curb and gutter, and our, our general approach is to build sidewalks along curb and gutter streets. These are ditch section streets, so we, not only would we have to install curb and gutter, but we'd have to also upgrade the ditch section to, to be an enclosed drainage system within the roadway. And, and, and we, we often do require that where we add curb and gutter along those streets, we'll add sidewalk.
Okay, thank you. I mean, it's not that long a stretch, but I mean, the problem is there's no infrastructure to...
Sam, I'm sorry, man. I was just trying to get it pulled up. We couldn't get it found on the map up here, but just the stretch that, that goes across, not, not necessarily all the way to the curve, do you know about, how, how long is that stretch that goes from Old Salem to where it cuts off at Constantine? The east-west piece, or the most...
The east-west piece, my recollection is that's approximately 1,000 feet.
Oh, I thought it was 600 feet.
Well, this, this stretch of, this stretch of Overall Creek that we're annexing, I think, and I don't have the annexation study in front of me. The total parcel to the south between East Overall Creek and Old Salem, I think, is 15 acres.
I see.
And, and the, the portion, and I'll, we, we have this doc, this telestrator here, but the, the portion of the property that is here contains a current single-family dwelling and will not be developed. The lots would be created here, and so adding sidewalk to a portion of this would only perhaps cover about five to, 400 to 500 feet through there, 300 to 400 feet. Those RS15 lots, minimum lot width, I think, is 95 feet.
And Sam, that would be the only sidewalks in that area?
It'd be the only sidewalks that we would have in this area currently with, with the development of this property, and perhaps this property that would include new public streets, sidewalks would be added to the internal streets there.
It looks like that, that single-family house to the south of, of the east-west portion is only maybe a third of that, of that boxed-in property, so there's, you know, there's nothing going to go at the corner of Old Salem and East Overall Creek? I mean, if you, you've drawn a box all the way over there that says that's single-family and nothing...
Yes, that's, that's one single-family home that, that, that they have proposed to keep on. I think that's approximately a five-acre tract. And it was, I think it was the original home that, that was with the 15-acre property when the developer purchased it.
The property on the right side of the screen there, the eastern side, the, where you've got the X drawn?
The other X with the circle around it.
The X with the circle around, yes, that one. That, that one was recently just annexed into the city, right?
All three of these properties were part of the same annexation petition along with the right-of-way of, of Old Salem and the east-west portion of East Overall Creek Road. The rezonings were considered separately, but they were all part of the same annexation petition.
And, and I'm trying to remember that, I think the Puckett Creek there was the divide between one of us, different zonings. Do you know what the zoning for that X with the circle around it is?
The, that, that, if, as I recall, I'm going to look at Margaret Ann to see if she'll confirm that, but I think it's Commercial Highway.
Commercial Fringe.
Commercial Fringe.
So, there really is potential that these neighborhoods could want access to Commercial Fringe properties?
Certainly.
I mean, it, and I'm assuming on that Commercial Fringe property, we will require them to put sidewalks on Old Salem Road, wouldn't we?
You know, that, that's a good question. I don't know that I can answer that tonight, but there's about 3,000 feet, 4,000 feet of Old Salem Road that's in this, in this similar condition. I don't know, we've seen development plans on that. Our, our normal consideration on that is for the developer to, to participate in the improvements along that roadway. And, and so one of the ways we would do that, and my thoughts on Old Salem at this point, would be that we would, we would widen it to add turning lanes at a minimum, supporting traffic, addition, you know, the traffic demands there as well. But, but one of the... But one of the things we would struggle with in that situation is if part of the road, half of the road is improved and the other half is not, the opposite side, if you will, because that's abutting, at this point, county property. And we're unsure of the nature and status of the time that that might be proposed for development.
But the legal opinion that we got in the Planning Commission meeting last night was that we would zone the whole road.
Certainly, zone the whole road, but the developer's obligation to participate would be for... Generally, we would have him participating in the portion that, the half of the road that abuts their property.
Back to that other, the other X without the circle around it?
Yes, sir.
How is it zoned?
RS-15. So it's proposed, single-family residential lots, RS-15, which is the same as the property to the south. I'm not going to draw another X.
So if those were going to be homes, I mean, I guess the, I think what you're asking is, is if those are ultimately going to be homes, even though we're only talking about four or five potentially now, there's still going to be more that might be to the north of that east-west section. And then we're also going to have some potential commercial coming in right next door. I mean, is there a way that we can, is it just completely not feasible to not put a sidewalk or to put a sidewalk there?
It certainly, certainly is feasible and something that we would want to include in any new roadway plan.
Okay. I think one thing we may want to look at, and, you know, we don't have the development plan in front of us, but I see the RS-15 parcel, that's going to be developed to city standards. They're going to have sidewalks within that neighborhood. That neighborhood, I expect, is going to connect to Constantine and Old Salem. And that, Old Salem will have sidewalks. I think the network's going to have a sidewalk network. If it was gravitating toward that Commercial Fringe, we would have sidewalks in the city neighborhood connecting to Old Salem and the Commercial Fringe, as opposed to, you know, the little J shape on Overall Creek. I know that's the part that's a challenge from an engineering standpoint, but I think the balance of everything else will have sidewalks and should provide that pedestrian connectivity.
And I really don't think, because of the lot size, going further out, I mean, I was going to suggest we defer and talk about it during the week, but I don't think, because of the lot size, I don't think that there's any more annexation going to take place because of the limited length there. So I'll make a motion to move for approval.
Second. Motion second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Skills Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
I will now need to consider for adoption Resolution seventeen RA eight, excuse me, A zero two to annex approximately point seven acres of East Overall Creek Road right-of-way and to incorporate the same within the corporate boundaries of City of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, City of Murfreesboro Engineering Department applicant two thousand sixteen dash five twenty-one.
Summon.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Skills Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Pursuant to Resolution seventeen RPH zero three, adopted by the City Council on January twelfth, two thousand seventeen, will need to conduct a public hearing to consider, one, the adoption of a plan of services for an annexation of fifty-five point six acres, and, two, the zoning of approximately forty-six point five acres located along Last Cassis Pike to propose, excuse me, to Plan Residential Development PRD District, Laurel Stone PRD, which have been proposed to be annexed to the City of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, Anna Elrod, Rutherford County Government, and Goodall Homes LLC applicants, two thousand sixteen five twenty, two thousand sixteen four fifty-seven. Notice that said public hearing was published in the February thirteenth, two thousand seventeen issue of the local newspaper. Mr. Blomley?
Good evening, Mayor McFarland and members of council. Our next public hearing tonight is with regards to the annexation plan of services and petition for property located along Last Cassis Pike. It's the property colored in purple on the map before you. And just for the sake of the council and of the public in the audience tonight, I'll give a brief presentation on the annexation, and then we'll vote on the plan of services and then the annexation petition, and then there will be a separate presentation and public hearing on the zoning. So with this first presentation is with regard to the annexation only, bringing this property into the city limits. The subject property itself is a little over forty-six acres. It's the Elrod property. There's also a little strip that the developers, Goodall Homes, will be purchasing from Rutherford County Government along Cushing Avenue. That's property directly across the street from Oakland Middle School. And you'll see in the zoning plan, which will be the next item on the agenda, there is a new public street that's proposed to be located from the subject property to Cushing Avenue. And so that's why they're acquiring that strip from Rutherford County Government. But we received petitions from both the Elrod family and Mayor Burches, representing Rutherford County Government. The property is within the city limits, or, excuse me, within the city's urban growth boundary and is contiguous, as you can see on its western side, with the existing city limits. You'll notice that we have added some additional right-of-way in the study area, about twenty-seven hundred linear feet of Last Cassis Pike right-of-way and about six hundred and fifty linear feet of DeJarnet Lane right-of-way. And you'll see that, and it looks like we're kind of boxing in an area. But we have left the ever-present ten-foot strip along DeJarnet Lane. We have left the ten-foot strip in between the existing city limits and the proposed right-of-way. We kind of took that tack from the FedEx annexation when we went ahead and just annexed as much of the South Rutherford Boulevard right-of-way as we could and left a ten-foot strip. This will hopefully try to help clarify any confusion that there might be on DeJarnet Lane and what's in the city limits and what's outside of the city limits. And also, the reason that we've gotten that, the intersection of Last Cassis Pike and DeJarnet Lane and included that in the study area is to get that whole signalized intersection and all of the laneage for that signalized intersection in our jurisdiction. But in the agenda packets that you have before you, the plan of services is included, and it shows that we can provide services to the subject property upon annexation. Sewer is nearby, water is available. Fire Department has indicated that it will be able to provide services to the subject property, two fire stations within a couple miles of the subject property, two or three miles. So with that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions with regards to the annexation and the plan of services. And then the zoning will be a separate item after we vote on the plan of services and the annexation petition.
Matthew, let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Would it not be advantageous to us to go ahead and annex Last Cassis Pike coming in on up to where it connects into city limits again with the ten-foot space there? Just so we know that, because now we're creating a section of Last Cassis Pike that's county in the middle of what we say we're fixing. And would we not be advantageous to go ahead and just annex all the way up to the city limits again?
Down further, further south than what we're showing.
Right, right.
That's not something that we looked at. We tried to stay relatively close to the property, and our main goal was getting that intersection of Last Cassis Pike and DeJarnet Lane. I believe that even though that intersection is within the county's jurisdiction, I believe that we maintain that traffic signal. Mr. Whittaker and Mr. Huddleston, not Mr. Whittaker, Mr. Whittaker and Mr. Huddleston are nodding in agreement. And that's the main reason why we wanted to get that intersection into city limits. Since we're already maintaining that traffic signal, we might as well have it in our jurisdiction. But that's not something that we looked at, Mr. Smotherman. And at this point, without re-advertising, it would be too late to include it in this particular study.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, we're going to need to conduct a public hearing on the annexation and the plan of services. Actually, we've got it separate on this one. We'll conduct a public hearing on the, excuse me, that's right, on the plan of services and the annexation for fifty-five point six acres along Last Cassis Pike. Anna Elrod and Rutherford County Government are the applicants, two thousand sixteen five twenty. So this is just for the annexation and the plan of services, not the zoning. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Yes, sir. This is for the annexation and the plan of services. Yeah, there will be another public hearing on the zoning, the houses and all of that. But you're welcome to come up and, you still can come up and speak if you'd like.
I just wanted to kind of, a lot of you weren't here during the other meeting.
Okay, tell me, if you'll tell us your name and address, please.
I'm Bobby Houston.
Okay.
I'm at two eight five nine Oakview Drive. And a lot of you wasn't here on the first one, so I wanted to update some of you. We had, at one time, there was tons and tons of plastic from Cummings signs that was dumped on this ground. It caught on fire, and it stayed burning at least two, three weeks. They kept trying to put it out. It wouldn't go out. Anyway, they finally got it out. And then it caught back on fire again, but we asked for soil samples. And we got something from the Planning Commission saying that they didn't say no need for a soil, but we've done contact the state of Tennessee, and they turned it over to them, inspecting a soil sample. But Huddleston's saying, no, I don't see no need to do a soil sample. But the state's already said there's contamination on that land. And so I wanted to bring that out before y'all did y'all's thing. But, you know, I've done contacted federal, I've contacted state, and they said a lot of that burnt plastic could cause cancer or something like that. And so I just wanted that known before y'all do y'all's thing. It is contamination in that land. And what y'all want to vote on it, you know, depends on y'all. But I just wanted that fact brought out. A lot of y'all wasn't here during that first meeting. And also, there is a flood zone, and you could test, you know, I had mentioned it's bigger than what they're showing on the map. I've seen it with my own eyes. And a lot of y'all remember Nashville. A lot of that you wanted to believe was going to ever happen. If something backs up in that creek, it'll take all them houses out. When you get something backed up, it'll flood. And anyway, y'all get started on this, and I'll speak on the next one.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Houston. Anyone else wishing to speak for the annexation or the plan of services? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll consider for adoption Resolution seventeen RPS oh three to adopt a plan of services for approximately fifty-five point six acres along Last Cassis Pike, Anna Elrod and Rutherford County Government applicants, two thousand sixteen five twenty. And as far as the, Mr. Huddleston, you don't have to, you don't have to get up, Sam, but as far as for the zoning, can we talk about the soil and plastics and floodway on the zoning? Okay. Mr. Houston, we're going to get that on the zoning.
Maybe we can talk about Bill Huddleston. I'm not sure.
Okay.
Were you talking about Bill Huddleston or Sam Huddleston?
I think he was talking about Sam.
Was it Sam? Okay.
Yeah, okay. Because I think SEC is doing the, it's like SEC. Okay. All right, you've got...
Blomley.
Okay, that'd be Mr., that'd be that Sam back there, so we'll get that on the zoning, so. All right, you've got the plan of services in front of you.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Skills Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider for adoption Resolution seventeen RPS zero three to adopt a plan of services for approximately fifty-five point six acres along Last Cassis Pike. Anna, excuse me, move to the next one. It's seventeen RA zero three to annex approximately fifty-five point six acres along Last Cassis Pike and to incorporate the same within the corporate boundaries of the City of Murfreesboro, Tennessee, Anna Elrod and Rutherford County Government applicants, two thousand sixteen five twenty. And this is for the annexation.
Summon.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Skills Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Will now need to conduct a public hearing to consider zoning approximately forty-six point five acres located along Last Cassis Pike to be, to Plan Residential Development PRD District, Laurel Stone PRD, simultaneous with annexation, Goodall Homes LLC applicant, two thousand sixteen dash four fifty-seven.
Mr. Blomley?
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Our next public hearing is the companion zoning request to the property that you just considered for annexation. It's the property colored in the purple on this map, and totals forty-six point five acres. The applicants have requested a PRD zoning simultaneous with annexation. And I won't go into the details of their annexation. I will mention, or, excuse me, of their zoning, because Mr. Mulchan has a PowerPoint presentation. But I will mention that it is a proposed one-hundred-and-ninety-nine, single-family attached homes. According to the application, it would be an age-targeted product. It wouldn't be age-restricted, but it would be seen as being a step-down, kind of a maintenance-free living. So it would be age-targeted towards that maintenance-free customer. Couple of the things that were brought out in the Planning Commission public hearing that they have since addressed, since the Planning Commission public hearing, with regards to the phasing of construction. The Planning Commission was, stated that it was imperative that no construction on Phase Two, and the majority of Phase Two is on the west side of the creek, no construction on Phase Two would be allowed until the bridge was constructed. And so there is language that's been put into the plan that codifies that in the pattern book. Also, there were some discrepancies in the applicant's presentation and the pattern book with regards to the building materials. The applicant's representative has made those consistent. And just to kind of give you a sneak peek, the structures are proposed to be all brick, stone, or hardy board, with the exception of maximum of fifteen percent vinyl on the front and rear elevations. And so the language in the PowerPoint and the language in the pattern book are both consistent there. The applicant did also address a number of the issues by the Planning Commission during its work session by adding additional guest parking throughout the development and also adding a walking trail along the frontage of the property along Last Cassis Pike and East Pitts Lane. So the applicants have attempted to address the concerns of the Planning Commission. And with that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing. Mr. Mulchan does have a brief PowerPoint presentation. And one of the things that I did want to mention, we did conduct a neighborhood meeting at St. Mark's United Methodist Church at six p.m. on December twenty-first. Had a good showing, about fifteen or twenty neighbors, and it was a good time for folks to ask questions and learn about the development before we actually had the public hearing at the Planning Commission. So I'd like to invite Mr. Mulchan up if the City Council doesn't have any further questions for me at this time.
Evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Rob Mulchan, SEC. I'm here tonight on behalf of Goodall Homes to present to you our plan residential development for Laurel Stone. Goodall Homes is a middle Tennessee company that has been developing communities throughout middle Tennessee for the past fifteen, twenty years, has a very good standing within the community. They create very well-constructed communities and also well-crafted homes that will be incorporating into this development as well. I'll take you through a little pre-presentation in regards to the project itself. As you can see, the site is located roughly just north of the intersection of DeJarnet Lane along Last Cassis. It's abounded by Oakland Middle School on the west and Emory Estates subdivision on the north. Oakland High School is also to the south and southwest of the proposed site. Existing zonings, as you can see, is being incorporated in the city. You've got a mix of residential RS-ten and RS-15 to the west, and then you've got a small PRD to the north, and then the remainder of the properties around the proposed subdivision are RM in the county on that side for medium residential. Give you a quick little overview of some of the, what the site looks like consistently today. This is along Cushing Lane next to Oakland Middle, as you're heading north towards the site. This is along west, looking west, along East Pitts Lane, so this is along the southern boundary of the property. And this is along, this is a view from Oakview Drive looking south onto the property itself. So this is existing tree line is the barrier between the existing subdivision and Oakview Drive and the proposed development. Drive and the, uh, proposed development. This is one of the homes at the end of the, uh, existing Oakview Drive and Emory Estates subdivision. And this is one of the existing homes over in the, uh, Cushing Avenue in the Huntington Place subdivision, which is an R S ten subdivision. So this is some of the style of the homes in the neighboring communities. Overall, we're requesting for a P R D on this rezoning. Uh, we're looking at about roughly about a hundred and ninety-nine dwelling units on the forty-six acres, so you're looking at about four point two eight units per acre on a, on a gross density side of things. The, um, you're looking at roughly about a hundred and forty-nine cottage lots and a hundred and fifty villa lots on this property. Each of these will be sold as fee simple, so zero lot line more or less in regards to those properties. We're looking at moving these as an age-targeted product, more or less what this is looking at is regards to a person who's looking for a step down or a limited amount of maintenance on their property. Um, so this will be more, you know, you're looking at a house that you're maintaining while the H O A maintains the grounds in and around the property itself. Um, you know, this will not be exclusive to any age group. I mean, this is available for others to buy into and then, you know, looking at, you know, single parents to widows or anyone like that, but just people looking for a product that you longer have to worry about yard maintenance and such on that side. As I expressed, there's two co- two dwelling units on this, a cottage and a villa. The project will be solely developed with underground utilities. We're looking at a mixture of public and, uh, public streets and private alleyways. Uh, we'll also be providing a minimum of four parking spaces off-street on each lot. That'd be two in the dr- in the garages and, and two in the driveways. Um, the garages will be restricted to, uh, vehicular use only through covenants and restrictions for the H O A. We'll also be looking at an additional hundred and forty-five guest parking spaces, uh, that will be strewn throughout the, the development itself. So we'll be providing an exit, you know, a lot of extra parking spaces throughout the community for guests to, you know, come and enjoy time with their friends and family. Um, solid waste will be provided by the city of, of Murfreesboro. Uh, we've had discussions with the city in regards to this. They will be providing trash pickup in both the private street and on private alleyways and also the public streets. And we'll be also providing, um, working with M E D. from the standpoint of street lighting, we'll be providing streetlights along the public streets and also in the private alleyways. And we're working with M E D. to produce that electrical plan and also coordinate where the lights go in regards to illuminating those private alleyways. Uh, look at both styles of the homes. We've got the cottage lots, we're looking at a hundred and forty-eight of the age-targeted cottages. These will be one and, one and two-story homes. Looking at a minimum of twelve hundred square foot on these, uh, units. Uh, there'll be at least two bedrooms. They'll be alley-loaded, so the garages will be off an alleyway in the back, the private alleyways, so you will, these will be more or less to have a facade that looks out on the public streets in regards that has a no garage, uh, view from the street. Now, we're utilizing decorative garage doors with mixtures of colors along the alleyways as well. And again, these will be sold as fee simple units. Uh, as Matthew talked about, we'll be looking at building materials. There was some discussion during planning commission regards to what those materials be. The, all the elevation will be comprised of a masonry material, brick, stone, or hardy board. Um, no vinyl siding permitted on the sides. You'll be looking at a, a maximum of fifteen percent vinyl on, in both the front and rear elevations of these homes. So you're looking at some of the gables and stuff like that, they'll have some of the, you know, vinyl siding elements on it. And then vinyl will also be permitted in the trim and soffit areas. Here's a representation of what the floor, first floor plan would look like on these homes. Um, what we're depicting here is more or less, there was some discussion regards to if we're utilizing these garages for solely vehicular uses, where would the trashcans be stored? Uh, with this graphic here, you can see the red boxes are located on these cottage units in the entrance courts. Um, to the, the bottom portion of the page, that's actually the rear of the units, that's the alley-loaded side of the units. And to the top of the page is actually the front-facing or public street side of the, uh, units. So technically, the, the front door to these units is actually accessed off the alleyways. So these entrance courts here would be the locations would be storing the trashcans on the six days that it's non-trash pickup day on those. Um, we've got a couple of different types of cottage-type lots. We have a perimeter lot, which you can see here depicted in yellow, that's along Pitts Lane and Last Cassis Pike. Those will have a forty-foot front setback and you're looking at a rear setback or for thirty-five foot. So you've got at least, you know, room for four cars potentially in the, in the, in the driveway area besides the two garage spaces in the garage as well. And you're also looking at an internal cottage style, as you can see depicted in the, in the yellow here. Here you're looking at the fronts of these being only ten foot on the front setback from the sidewalk and in the right-of-way. And the rear, you'll have a twenty-foot rear setback, so you can accommodate, you know, at least two vehicles in the driveway and then two also in the garage of the aid with the, uh, restrictions and the covenants for, you know, the use of the garage for vehicles only. The villas, looking at about fifty of these in regards to the project, these will be age-targeted as well. These will be one and tour two-story, uh, homes. It'll be a minimum of fourteen hundred square foot of living space. These will be two bedrooms with an optional third bedroom, so you're looking at a floor plan that could potentially on those two stories have an extra room upstairs that can be, you can find it could be either a bonus or utilized as an actual optional third bedroom. Uh, these will be, these will be the front-entry loaded two-guard garages. As you can see depicted in the illustrations below, this is kind of the, the style and character that Goodall's planning on bringing in regards to these, uh, these villa lots. They're almost like, these were technically more like a duplex kind of, uh, lot setup. And then we also feel like utilizing decorative garage doors with mixtures of colors and they'll also be sold as fee simple units. Uh, again, building materials, same as the cottages. All elevations will be comprised of masonry materials, um, with the, only fifteen percent of the fronts and rears being comprised of a vinyl siding product. And then, uh, vinyl also in the trim and soffit areas. Depicted here is the representation of what the floor plan for the villas would look like. This was in regards to, again, looking at the trash. Um, as you can see, the red boxes. The villas had a little extra room in the garage for trash storage, so this will function well from these, these will be front-entry side of things. The garage, the trashcans will be solely stored in the garage. You can see they either have enough room in between the vehicles. And these are large-sized vehicles, these are large-sized S U Vs. So you're looking at one of the largest vehicles depicted in the floor plan there. So you have plenty of space on both of those units for maneuverability of people getting in and out of their vehicles and going into their homes on that side. So if it's not enough room in the front of the side of the gar- of the canopy with inside the garage space, they've actually, you know, made little cubbies in order for you to store your trashcan inside during the, uh, six days that it's not trash pickup day. The villas is depicted here in the yellow. These will be, uh, front setbacks of twenty foot, so you can get two cars parked in the driveway before you get the two cars in the garage. Also have a rear setback of twenty foot along the rear mer. Phasing, uh, as Matthew talked about, uh, we, during, from planning commission, we had, there was some discussion regards to phasing and regards to the bridge itself. Um, Phase one A, as you can see, depicted in the purple is the, is more or less our end, is our first phase development coming in off of Last Cassis. Phase one B in yellow is the bridge crossing the creek. Um, we were, we have now put in the booklet that you guys have in front of you today, uh, that no development shall occur within Phase Two unless that bridge happens. So this is more or less a depiction of what the discussions were during planning commission regards to, um, vehicular traffic being solely fed on to Last Cassis Pike, whereas if the bridge is completed, it'll allow us to have actual connectivity back to Cushing Avenue as our secondary means of ingress and egress to the property. And I'll speak more about that here in just a few minutes. Amenities, we've got numerous amenities. The site itself, the property itself, we're dedicating over twenty-five percent of the site to open space or common areas. Uh, as you can see here, the yellow circle depicts the location of what we're looking at as our, uh, main amenity feature, or cabana or pool, or cabana house or, uh, gathering space on that. We'll have outdoor seating and dining areas. We're also looking at a community gardens for the residents, you know, in this age-targeted product. You're looking at those who like to gather, get together, grow some, you know, vegetables and fruits and stuff. So we're gonna provide those amenities for them as well. Then also looking at a dog park centralized in regards to the, uh, overall, uh, amenity feature of the cabana house as well. And then along Pitts Lane and Last Cassis Pike, we're gonna have an offline sidewalk. It's a five-foot wide sidewalk that'll lead from our main entrance at Last Cassis down along Last Cassis outside of the right-of-way and then turning along, uh, East Pitts Lane and back into the subdivision. So we more or less have a pedestrian walking system that will lead along that, along those roadways, but also be tied into the overall walking system within the, uh, community itself. Access, as I alluded to earlier, where our main initial access point will be on the northern portion of our property on Last Cassis Pike. Our secondary means of ingress and egress will be off of Cushing Avenue. Now, we utilize that sixty-foot strip of land that we were purchasing from the county to allow us to get between Cushing Avenue and back to the existing Elrod property. Uh, we've also got two, uh, two eventual stubs, one to the south of the property and then also one in the, in the middle of the property that's towards the north that allows access to those adjacent properties that are rezoned R M. at this time. We've also then gone ahead and dedicated right-of-way, um, coming off this street heading south towards East Pitts Lane. Uh, the right-of-way is being dedicated solely for the purpose that at some point in time the city feels necessary that there needs to be a connection for connectivity and also any upgrades along the roadway that, that is already appropriated for the use by the city on that side. And coming out of planning commission, there's some discussion we also looked at. We're gonna go ahead and dedicate, um, the northern portion of the, uh, of the East Pitts Lane corridor for, uh, expansion for the, uh, increasing the right-of-way for the city in regards to East Pitts Lane as well. Public, you know, this is a little diagram that depicts our roadway structure. As you can see in purple, this will be our fifty-foot right-of-way. This will be our main thoroughfare through the subdivision. So you had that connectivity between, uh, Last Cassis Pike and back over to Cushing Avenue, but it's not a direct route. It is a somewhat indirect route, but that will be our fifty-foot right-of-way. The yellow is depicted as our forty-foot. These are both, this is another public roadway, so you can see those connections between those. And the red is depicted as our private alleyways and our alleyway structure in regards to the development. With that, I'll be available for any questions now or after the public hearing, and I thank you for your time.
Any questions for Mr. Mulchan? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing none, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider zoning approximately forty-six point five acres located along Last Cassis Pike to plan residential development, P R D District Laurel Stone P R D simultaneous with annexation. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium.
Guess y'all gonna get tired of seeing me before it's over with, but, uh, anyway, I've, I've told about the flood. Uh, I've seen water basically up there where they're gonna build all this stuff at. Uh, they tried to say, no, it can't happen, but I, I've seen it, but, and y'all have seen the Nashville thing, so you know anything's possible. But, uh, the other point, we've contacted the state and then I contacted federal about the soil. State's D A R Ken, Ken Johnson, turned that over to them. And by that paper, they're saying they're not gonna do anything. So, you know, tomorrow I'm gonna be on the phone back with the state, tell them that they're not gonna check soil, but they, the state says there's contamination in the soil. But anyway, uh, whether y'all approve it or don't approve it, all I can say is, uh, like, y'all go ahead and build this thing, approve it and build it. These people will wake up some morning, their house is in water, or if they start getting cancer or something, I'm gonna be the first one over letting them know that we went to the city, we went to the S E C. or whatever. We was, we went there and told y'all that, that the state and the, uh, net, the federal said it's possible that you can get cancer from the soil that, in that ground. If y'all go ahead and approve it, like I say, I'll be the first one. They start getting cancer or wake up in their house underwater, which like I say, I've done seen it three or four times myself, way up where they're building all these houses. And so, uh, that's about the only thing except for, uh, you know, I'm where, I'm up a little slope where I live, I live on Oakview. Our water runs down that way and they said something about they're gonna build the property up. Their flood, their flood plain ain't right on that paper, cause, you know, it, it's been way up there. And, uh, but if they do something where it backs up on us, y'all expect, you know, that we, we'd be coming after you too, you know, cause we've told you, you know, it's, and you never know what's gonna get in that water and make it back up. And, uh, that's about all I can say. I've got some more that's behind me, so.
Thank you, Mr. Houston.
Hi, I'm Pat Turner and I'm at two eight six nine Oakview Drive. And I have concerns about the land, uh, about the plastics fire. My children played on that land and ate blackberries from the bramble that grows there. And they have some serious health problems. It'll take a few years for the health problems to show up, but they will. And, um, I'm, I'm just really concerned at the way that, that this seems to be being blown away, um, disregarded. I went through the two-hundred and something, almost three-hundred pages of, of the agenda for the council tonight and I, I read all the, the stuff I missed at the last meeting cause I was sick. And, um, Mr. Huddleston said that, that his staff does not see or suggest that there are major environmental issues with the property. Uh, some of you, I apologize, not all of you, but some of you have, uh, copies of the D O R. report from the state. And it, it doesn't look like overwhelming, but the guy was only there an hour. And how much really can you do on almost fifty acres in an hour, right? So he did find melted plastics there. Dioxin is one of the possible contaminants that can be precipitated by a plastics fire. And although I did not live in this area at the time of the fire, uh, it's my understanding that the plastics were piled as high as a house. And that it burned for an extended period of time. They rustled it down to a soggy mess and then it caught fire again. And there was black smoke everywhere. Probably today, in light of what we know about plastics, there would have been an evacuation because of all the contaminants that would have been airborne at that time. But we didn't know to care back then. So I'm just asking you before you say, ah, Texas, you know, that you give some consideration to health issues too. Because they're even gonna have a community garden and that'll really be special on contaminated soil. Also, the, um, let's see, let me get this right. FEMA has...
Ms. Turner, you're at three minutes.
Um, okay. Well, I was just gonna say that FEMA has recognized this as a flood danger zone. And I think that about a third to a half of the homes will be in that area, but that's all I had to say.
We'll make sure and get those questions answered, Ms. Turner.
Pardon?
I said, we'll make sure and get those questions answered after the public hearing. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Yeah, I'm Mark Wilson, twenty-eight thirty-nine Oakview Drive. Uh, that's the northern part of the, of the border. Uh, my house is the last one on the, on the south side of, uh, Oakview. Um, and it's on the west side of Oakview. The thing I'm, first thing I'm concerned about is drainage. My property line, uh, which I'm not looking at the chart now, but my property line runs, uh, all the way down to the Watkins property, which is the, uh, northern border or corner, uh, on the western side of the proposed, uh, land. The drainage Bobby mentioned comes down Oakview Drive, runs south, curves down the side of my house on the fence line. And in most conditions continues on my property line down to the back where the old two-lane, uh, two dirt road is at the back of my lot. But in high rain areas, it does flood into that property. Uh, what I don't particularly want to happen is that, and I'm not fighting pro or con on this, on this deal, but what I don't want to happen is that there is not a way for water to... on this deal, but what I don't want to happen is that there is not a way for water to get out of there without having any ingress into my home. So that's just a concern I'd like addressed. The other thing is, and I don't know about this, and this is mostly a question to the developers, but I don't know the promises made by the developers when they're done. The HOA usually takes over most of that stuff, so I don't know how much of their promises would continue in effect with an HOA, and I'm assuming there will be one, it looks like there is, for things that they say they will do. So I would just like to have that clarified. Let's see. And it would be very interesting to see some additional separation there, since the back of the homes are pretty close to our homes on Oak View, than a privacy fence or something in that area, additional thickness of trees, something to give us a little privacy on that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
My name is Jack O'Rand. I live at 2858 Oak View Drive. When I was 12 and 13 years old, my mother, my father and I traveled Lass Cassas Highway, and that was the old road. I remember myself, I seen the smoke and the burning, and I seen the piles as tall as this, the red and blue plastic. When we went to visit my grandmother every Sunday, we could not go the Lass Cassas Highway. We had to go to the Halls Hill Road and come back around Lofton and come in there. I lived on the other side of town here, and you could see the smoke in the air, and you could breathe it, and you could see it boiling. It done that for two weeks. Finally went out, we went to my mother's, and we seen all the plastic and the stuff. We don't know who tried to put it out. I guess the fire department did, but I was living. After that, a week later, I seen it burning again, and we did not go that way. Another thing, I've lived there, at 2858 Oak View Drive, for 43 years. That is a good community. We have a good drainage system. It's natural drain. It runs down to this property that he wants to block off. It's a natural drain that goes around the back of it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. O'Rand. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against? Okay, seeing now, we'll close the public hearing. Mr. Huddleston, we've got a couple of questions I think would be good to, we've got several questions on drainage, flooding, and then also environmental.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Matt Taylor and Rob Mulchan are here, and I think they've got some information they'd like to share with you in just a couple of minutes. Let me start out with the questions about floodplain. And we have a FEMA-approved flood map for that area. The floodplain's about 600 feet wide across the property, so it's a very generous floodplain. The developer will be required to follow the city regulations on development in the floodplain, including elevating the lots and homes above the projected flood elevations. And that flood study was proposed, reviewed, and re-reviewed, and so we believe it is an accurate representation of the floodplain and will hold on to the expectations of the floodplain regulations on their development. Regarding the comments about water passing through, one of the exercises the design team always takes into consideration is water running onto their property and making sure that still has a route through their development, so it doesn't increase water or backwater up on the adjacent properties. And that's a pretty normal operation for them. There's a lot of questions about the plastics fire, and I don't think there's any doubt in our mind that there was a fire there. We've heard person after person testify about that. What we said was, at the planning commission level, was that the developer heard the testimony, and I expected them to be able to understand the magnitude of any plastics on the property and the impact it would have on their development. And so we were, when we made the statement that the city wasn't going to require testing, we weren't interested in requiring testing as a part of the annexation and rezoning property. The property's currently not in our jurisdiction, so we have no authority to even be asking about those sorts of things. But it is my expectation that, as the property's investigated and surveyed for development, that we'll understand the magnitude of that, and then the developer will take any steps appropriate to mitigate those, just like you would with a sinkhole, or a trash pit, or construction debris, or other things that you might find on old farm properties. So I would like for Mr. Turner and Mr. Mulchan maybe to get, I think they might have an update on some of the information on that.
Good evening, Councilman. Matt Taylor from SEC. My client has hired a geotechnical firm from Nashville, TTL. They have gone and conducted what you call an environmental site assessment, Phase One, on the property. They searched all the records, they visited the site, they pulled the records from the state, and they have come back basically with, I'll say, a clean bill of health, no reason to do any further investigation or cleanup actions out there. So they have given us the thumbs up for the property.
Has there been any evidence or documentation from the state that shows any of the things that we've heard tonight? I mean, we've got a copy of something up here that there was a person that went out from the state and from TDEC and performed some looking around, for lack of better terms, but it just says he looked around and he found a couple of remnants. Is there anything that says?
Part of that environmental site assessment is that that firm, that engineering firm, contacts the state agencies to see and obtain any environmental reports or anything like that that the state has on record, and then they'll take that and feed that back into their system. This particular firm went as far, whenever they contacted the environmental agency at TDEC, that they picked up the fact that the gas station to the northeast of this location had three underground storage tanks, and those had been replaced, I think, several years ago, and were operating appropriately. So not only did they look at this site, they also look offsite at what could potentially cause contaminants on this site, and still came back with a clean bill of health.
You have some hard copy documents of that for us?
We can, I don't have anything with me tonight, but we can certainly share it with staff, and they can feed that back up. It'll be a PDF.
Yes, fine.
Mr. Huddleston, Mr. Wilson had a question about the drainage coming from Oak View, where that would drain. How is that gonna affect, or what will we do to make sure that that does not affect them?
Yeah, I think Oak View is existing two-lane section county road, and it is draining onto this property. I'm looking, Mr. Taylor confirmed that, and we'd normally intercept that at the property boundary and route it through the drainage system installed with the development. And we would take all that pre-existing drainage pattern into consideration in the development plans. The engineer will do that, and then city staff will review it to make sure that it's appropriate. I think he, Mr. Wilson was at the end of the street, if I understood his...
2839?
2839, so it was the last lot that...
On this property.
Yeah, the last lot before you got to this property. And so our expectation is they'll intercept that and with a ditch at the rear of their development and take it toward Bushman Creek.
A question that we had, and this should be for the applicant, but buffering in between Oak View on those rear lots that back up is...
What we've proposed, Mayor, is to, you saw a picture of that existing tree row through there. We won't leave that existing tree row intact, since whenever we typically do buffer or added additional buffer, I'd say, is whenever we bring a different kind of land use next to that. And so we would prefer to leave that tree row undisturbed as much as possible and leave it in place.
Is there room for a privacy fence behind there?
There probably is room, but it will start to conflict with drainage patterns and things like that, because if we start to put a privacy fence there, that starts to act as a dam, more or less, from this water running onto our property would be one concern there, I think.
Okay, so we got flooding, we got the plastics drainage. Ms. Green or Mr. Blomley, could you tell us about HOA enforcement? I know that the city cannot, we can't regulate how, what an HOA enforces, but explain to us how that works.
Yeah, and I think this kind of dovetails with zoning, because it's, with this being a planned development, it's not, you know, the commitments they're making tonight are not necessarily solely going to be enforced by the HOA. They're, become the zoning for the property, so every commitment in that book is something that, as we review development plans, we'll make sure that those development plans are consistent with what they're representing here to you tonight in this book. And then also, once the development is constructed, if there are any deviations, if, you know, if something were to happen in the field that conflicted with that book, we would take action to make sure that it was brought into compliance.
Okay. Council members, do you have any questions?
What is the setback on those properties that are north properties there? What is the setback?
The setback of the proposed homes off of that northern property line, I believe it's 20, it's 20 feet.
Mr. Blomley, how would staff measure 15% front or rear vinyl? How would you measure that when that comes into building and codes or planning?
Yeah, the architectural elevations will require the architect to include a percentage on the elevations, so that we can make sure that they do not exceed that 15%.
My quick opinion, and this will be up to the council, I think within development that's this dense vinyl, facial and soffit is fine, and cement, hardy board or cement would be appropriate for everything else. I mean, gables, in some of the pictures that we've seen there, you can easily get that type of material for gables and dormers and those other things. So it's just, I think with the amount of density, that's a fair, a fair thing, my opinion.
Matt? Does that be a reasonable...
Yes, sir. We've got no problem with that.
All right, thanks.
Matt?
Yes, sir.
I know you say they went out there and looked at the property and did some testing and stuff. Did they actually do a soil sample?
I'd have to go back and read the foreword, and talk to them to verify that. I think typically with that Phase One, they do the, they do the, they talk to property owners, they investigate records, they do visual observation, and if they see a reason to do further testing, that they will.
Yeah, the one thing I'm absolutely sure of is there was a fire on this property, because I remember it as, I'd like to say I was younger than what I was, but it, I don't think it was quite 50 years ago, but I do remember the fire, and you could see it from a long way off. I mean, it was a plastics fire, and they did have problems with it reigniting and flaring back up on them. But the thing that I guess I question is, when the Tennessee Department of Environmental Conservation went out there and looked at the property, it doesn't appear that they went a whole lot, it doesn't appear that they're very concerned with the soil, because, I mean, the pictures are showing us of cinder blocks and discarded tires and an abandoned, rusted-out car and a few pieces of plastic on the ground. I'm not sure that that's not pretty common to find anywhere in a wooded area in Rutherford County, if you were to go out and roam across a piece of wooded property. But there's absolutely nothing in here that indicates that there was, you know, any asbestos found in the soil or high rates of radon or dioxin or anything. I mean, they just, you know, it says they walked the property, and there were several junk cars, bricks, asphalt, and wood, but they don't seem to be overly concerned about what they saw. And truthfully, I'm surprised that there wasn't a large amount of burnt plastic. I mean, I know they're showing some melted plastic here, but, you know, it's nothing dramatic. I mean, it looks like it may be a foot and a half in diameter or something like that. So I don't think that what was presented really indicates that there's a huge concern for the soil and the contents of the soil. So I don't, I just don't see anything in what Mr. Houston presented us to indicate that they were overly concerned with it. And so I, and clearly there'll be an HOA there. The property can't release the water at any greater rate than it currently does. It will have a designed drainage system, which is something that it doesn't have today. It's basically just farmland that water runs downhill on today, so there'll be a ditch system with a designed water flow pattern that'll get the water down to the creek, so... And certainly, we can't release the water at any greater rate than it currently releases. And, I mean, it looks to me like a substantial investment in a bridge to span that large an area. Is there, at what point will the bridge be built? Is that a Phase One project, or is that a Phase Four of the project?
It's really gonna be between Phase One and Two. So we are, we've already started the process of studying the stream. We've obtained the information from FEMA that we need, and we're starting to size that now. Obviously, that's a big budgetary concern for my client, and so we want to get that answered pretty quickly. And because we think that's gonna be quite a lengthy build time and build cycle, and it'd be a completely different set of contractors than we would normally have on site, we're gonna have them doing that in between the construction of the physical homes in Phase One and when we start infrastructure in Phase Two.
I think from a safety standpoint and accessibility onto the property, it needs to be done.
Absolutely. The staff was very excited about that. The staff was pretty excited about that aspect of the property when we first started talking about it. They want that additional east-west connector besides Dejarnet.
And I do want to say thank you for the sidewalk that was added on the Lass Cassas Pike, and I guess it's, what is that, Pitts Lane or...
Yes, sir.
That wasn't something that had to be done, and I think the developer went above and beyond of creating a pedestrian network there, which is, you know, going to be a real amenity to the neighborhood if it's approved, and so thank you for doing that.
Sir, our pleasure.
Could I ask a question of the staff, because I'm just not sure about this. When we have a property like this, where there are some environmental concerns about what has been on that property before, and, you know, when you walk the property, you're probably not gonna see something. When you start moving dirt, which I'm sure this is gonna require, is there any monitoring or any, you know, if a red flag comes up with something when we start moving dirt on this property, is there, who mitigates that and who... Yeah, okay.
Yes, Mr. Shacklet, there's a normal course of action in initiating development on a project like this. During the surveying and engineering and inspections of the site, observations are made when items that seem to be out of order are noticed, and we look through those. Again, when we get into the construction phase and we start removing a little of vegetation and seeing the topsoil stripped away, if there's visual indicators, odor, you know, discoloration, foreign materials that are discovered, that's... always gonna be a concern for us in the roadway and in the, in the properties. And, and if and when we do encounter those, uh, we'll, we'll stop and take, uh, appropriate actions at that point. I think based on everything we've seen, there's a concern, but maybe not enough evidence for it to be actionable. Uh, and so, uh, uh, the, the design teams heard the testimony, we've, we've had some initial inspections, uh, we've even got maybe a little bit of a confirmation from TDEC that there's, there's, there's something that's happened there in the past, but, uh, we, we, we just need to, to be watching for it, and, um, and the, the dirt guys and the inspectors know when they're, when they're digging out there, they know that, uh, what materials look like and what they're not supposed to look like, and, and they'll, they'll alert us if, if anything's discovered there. And then we'll evaluate it and take appropriate steps, uh, which might include sampling and, uh, and testing. Uh, but, but you gotta, we've gotta have something, maybe a little bit more than, than where we're at today. Uh, where in my old life as an environmental consultant, uh, this would be something that we would flag and would monitor, and then as we, we move forward in the project, uh, we're, we're going to pay a little closer attention to the, to the materials we're working with and the things we discover on site.
Well, that, that was my concern, that, that there is a, still a concern that something might be discovered, and, and who was going to monitor that? If the city continues to monitor that, then I think that's, uh, should give some assurance to the property owners that we do recognize that there, this is something we need to be looking at.
Yeah, certainly, certainly this would be our approach on, um, former underground tank sites. We, we see those from time to time in development projects or, uh, projects with, with disposal pits, you know, sometimes construction debris gets, gets buried on job sites, and sometimes really just general trash and other things. So we're, we're always alert to those things and, and bring them to the attention of the developers when we can, and then occasionally they'll bring them to our attention. Uh, hey, we're gonna have to stop for a little while, we've got some problems with material. And, uh, and then when we do that, uh, we'll, we'll follow the, uh, the normal protocol.
And what we have seen in the past is sometimes where areas have provided a huge flooding problem, a lot of times the development is actually, so, helps the issues of flooding in particular areas. So where in the past this area might have flooded extensively, when that development goes in with a drainage system and an engineered way to handle the water over that property, then it actually could improve the situation.
Yeah, that's certainly true in a lot of development projects. Um, you know, the, uh, the need to protect undeveloped land from flooding is really just not there. Uh, water that spreads out over a, you know, an unused field is, is, is really something to watch and something we, we're interested in, but, uh, there's really, long-term, not much harm or damage from that. Uh, but, but when we do get homes constructed in there, then our, um, our attention to the flooding and our attention to the drainage goes way up, uh, and we want to protect those investments, the roads and, and, and homes that are gonna be built in there.
Any other questions?
I'll just make one comment. Um, you know, I think we ought to be concerned about the plastic from a standpoint of making sure that whatever we can do, we do. I also say that, you know, there are a lot of places in our town where we have, you know...
Where there's been a fire.
Where there's been a fire, where there's certainly been plastic. Uh, the research that I've done since Ms. Turner called me, I looked around, tried to do the best I could, but, um, you know, it seems to me that everything that I find, the danger really comes in the smoke, the pollutants that are generated when the fire happens, not necessarily after the fire. And I'm trying to put two and two together here, just based on TDEC not giving us any kind of concern whatsoever.
You referred to it as melted plastic.
Yeah, that, that, uh, I mean, I, I think we ought, you know, obviously need to keep an eye on it and do what we can, make sure it's not gonna create some sort of health risk, but I'm gonna move for approval.
Is that with the amendment on the vinyl?
Yeah, that's with the amendment on the vinyl, thanks. The vinyl limitation.
Motion second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Skills Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Consider recommendations of the Community Development Grant Coordinator use of funds through the Affordable Housing Assistance Program for 4315 Sunday Silence Way.
Move for approval.
Oh, Ms. Pope, go ahead, go ahead.
Move for approval on this or...
You, you're welcome to tell, you, only, only thing you can do for me is talk me out of it.
I'm gonna take an opportunity to say thank you for, uh, considering this. We do have a first-time home buyer that is eligible for our city's, um, Affordable Housing Assistance Program. And what I will mention is that in the month of April is, um, as we recognize the airport, is Community Development Week in the month of April. It's, uh, April the 17th through the 22nd. So I encourage folks in the City of Murfreesboro that are interested in the Community Development Department and the work that we do with our federal dollars through this program and a rehab program we do for housing in the city, um, you know, to contact us, and we'll be glad to talk to you about this program as well as others. There is information on the city's website about all the activities that we do in our department. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pope, and I went out and looked at the house on Sunday morning, I guess it was, and it's a, it's a beautiful house. Uh, I'm, I'm proud for the mother and the four children, I think it is, if, if it gets approved, and, and again, I'll move for approval.
Right, thank you.
Motion second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Skills Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
abstain.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Any of your permits?
Yes, Mayor, uh, we have a special event permit tonight for the Center for the Arts for an event on April the 22nd. Uh, that application is in order, is one of their fundraisers. We also have an application for a, uh, convenience store at 760 East Northfield Boulevard. It's an ownership change. The application is in order, but they do need to finish their building codes inspections before a permit could be, uh, issued if you approve it tonight. But we do recommend approval.
Motion second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Skills Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We have no board and commission appointments, any statements?
No, sir.
Okay.
I think they skipped out, but we had Leadership Rutherford who, who were here. Mr. Hudson signed off on them. Had several, several people from Leadership Rutherford. I think an elected official is supposed to sign that, Mr. Hudson, so I guess you're running for council in the next election.
He looks smarter than that.
Any, uh, any other business to come before the staff or come before the council?
Zero.
I will say, I just had, got a text, and MTSU was down 20 to 1, and they rallied back and won 67 or 69...
By three.
69, 63 or 67, 63.
Probably won by three.
Anyway, 26 and 4. So if you haven't been to seen them play, see them play, there's only one game left this upcoming Saturday. If you haven't seen this group play, for all the, all who are watching, you're missing out. They are phenomenal to watch play, so go out and see them play.
Go Blue Raiders.
That's right. All right, seeing no other business, we'll stand adjourned.